Okay, we're gonna call a mean to order. It is Tuesday, May 14th, 2024. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Minutes' reports received and filed?
Yes, we have the sheriff's April 2024 fees, the collector's April 2024 fees, and the treasurer's April 2024 reconciliation report.
Okay. Commissioner committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
Safety committee meeting today, planning commission meeting tonight, transportation meeting tomorrow morning. St. Mary's Health is celebrating Healthcare Week and invited us to
Barbecue.
Barbecue at St. Mary's Hospital tomorrow. Campo Board tomorrow. Eastside Business Association's got a golf tournament Friday that they used to pay for their scholarships. And then Friday's the end of legislative session, so I don't know what we're gonna do for entertainment after that.
I think you've mentioned everything on my calendar except Saturday is Armed Forces Day.
Okay. Did you mention the Chambers Transportation Meeting tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. I've got the barbecue. I have Harry S. Truman Foundation Zoom Wednesday at noon. Thursday, the 250th anniversary United States Committee meeting. And then also the Jefferson City Police Department Gala at Capitol Bluffs. Friday, Harry, you left a peanut sale. It is lion's peanut sale. So we will be on the corner here.
Who's we? Who's we?
The sheriff is helping. Either that or you're buying $100 worth of peanuts.
I'm hearing you're on your own.
Can I get a check and get out of this?
Well, he's gonna have you buy barbecue tickets.
But I have the Jefferson Fire Department Chief Schofield will be selling there from 7:00 to 9:00. So do you want to?
And don't swerve towards them because you will get pulled over.
I'd like to amend my calendar to include the peanut sale on Friday. And I'm at the Echo Corner, which is an exciting place at about 10 minutes to 8:00 because they come roaring down Jefferson. So I hope to be back next week.
We are much more civilized here on the corner of High and Monroe. Much more civilized. And then Saturday and Sunday is the Missouri Military Museum's Open House. They'll have reenactors and everything at like Skelton Center. And it is also free. So if somebody wants something to do this weekend, there's lots to do. Any commission comments? Okay. Bids and contracts. Zimmer Radio Contract Fund Transfer.
Halloween last year, you signed a contract with Zimmer for us to have radio ads to get people hired. We were 21 down, 21 down then, we're going 10 down now. I'd like to continue this for another two months. So I'd like to have a transfer of $14,000 to do another two months of Zimmer radio ads.
I'm good with it. We talked briefly too. There's still been social media too. We fill the staff up a little bit, take a little pressure off of them.
Does this take a motion to do this or just the signatures?
No, just the signature. I'm here, but I wanted to be aware of what we were doing.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Discussion and Approval of Commercial Real Estate Information Contract Assessor. I do not.
Can we do the attachments to the agenda now? We used to be able to do that. And then we just know they're no longer attached to the agenda that we pull up.
I wanted to do it, Brian, but no.
I'm gonna go with yes. I know where he parks. We need to have him towed. So can we look at that? Because then when everybody, we used to do that.
And just so everybody knows, Melissa worked on our microphone. So she said that they can pick up a lot more now. So some of these conversations. That's all I'm saying.
Thanks a lot, Melissa.
Mr. Assessor, I'm sorry. I apologize. Go right ahead.
We contract with an outside company for information on commercial sales and values and things like that. The company we've been with is not providing very much to us. So we've decided to go to a different company. Cost will be about the same. I think the total bill is $6,000 for the year.
Who was this with before?
The CoStar.
Okay.
Yeah, this company is called Crexxy.
Okay. I don't really have any questions about it.
Nor do I. I assume that they do business in Missouri. Other county assessors are using it? Got it, okay. I would make a motion to approve the payment out of the assessment fund. This is where this comes from. For a contract with, I'm trying to get the name here.
Crexxy's the company.
Commercial Real Estate Exchange, Inc., DBA Crexxy?
Yes.
For $6,000. I don't see that amount here.
It's placed down below where there are two users at $250 a month each. So that's $500 a month for 12 months.
Okay. For a $6,000 contract.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
All right, thank you for the dig.
Okay. Approval and Signing of Contract with Midmo Telecom.
Say, two years ago, we had a contract with Midmo Telecom in reference to troubleshooting our security electronics system that begins more in depth than what my staff can do. What I'd like to do is, is I would like to renew that contract, not to exceed $12,000. It was $15,000. I think we just talked to Jeff. I think we'll change it to $12,000 a year and then see what, and see what happens from that point on. I do have a contract here, but it says $15,000. So I would like to take this back, change the numbers and put a date on it and then resubmit it for Sam to sign if you approve the signature of the contract.
Last thing of the $12,000 keeps it under the bid threshold. So if you're fine with that, we can do the amendment and approve it upon that contingency. So you agree with that? Okay. I'll make a motion to sign the renewal not to exceed $12,000 with Midmo Telecom.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Do we have any unfinished business? New business, Accounts Payable Review.
We would request approval of Accounts Payable Pending Review.
Motion to approve Accounts Payable Pending Review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Collector to Present Annual Settlement.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is the Collector's Annual Settlement for the Collector's Year, which starts on March 1st, 2023, and ended on February 29th, 2024. As you look at it, you'll see that it is balanced. My total charges were $107,134,967. And my credits added up to the same. We distributed $100,984,106.32 last year to a different taxing entity. We had protested taxes approximately close to $800,000. Abatements, and most of this would be changes in property assessments. From $196,514.62. Our delinquent taxes are a little over $5 million. Most of those are real estate taxes. You're aware that after the three-year delinquent, we can sell those on the courthouse steps. So it's, most real estate delinquents are not a large concern, at least from my point of view. Because we will always get those collected with, for the most part, get them collected with policies and interests. So that is my annual settlement. If you have any questions, the first page is kind of a summary of everything. The second page is the current year's taxes. The third page is the delinquent year's taxes. And then at the bottom of the third page is the kind of other funds that are collected and then the dispersion that don't involve the actual property taxes. Includes fees and tax maintenance fund. Mission goes to the county.
Quick question, Larry. The protest number of almost 800,000, that's not quite double what it's been the last two times you were here. Did you notice more of that protested real estate taxes?
We had, for several years, we had Ameren's protest on there. And that, that had our protest amount up to a $4 million.
Okay.
Those have all been settled.
Yeah, I think the last two years before this one, it was into 400,000. Now it's close to 800. But it can be made up of a lot of places.
If you brought that with me, I didn't, but to tell you what those are, several of those have since been settled after February, after my year closed. But they have.
Okay.
I always have to wait so many days after the final decision to make sure they're not appealed.
Right.
To get those off. But several of those are coming off.
Well, one of the things that has got a bit of a wild, not wild swing, but a big swing is personal property from year to year. And I assume if the assessor was still here, I probably could answer this. But it, I think assessors were required to go to a new used car table a year or two ago. And that brought it up here. And now it's back here and then back up here. That there's some swings in there.
Well, the big swing was during COVID because cars, new cars weren't being made. That drove the value of used cars, or used cars basically, up very high.
Right.
So anybody that had an older vehicle, their valuation went up considerably. There, there has been efforts in the legislature to make some changes to that. I don't think anything was approved this year. But they did, they were using, I think they were using the NADA is what the state contracted for. The assessors use what the state provides them. It was NADA. And they have changed that, I think, in the last two years to a different. I don't know if they're using Kelly Blue Book or something like that.
Right. Okay.
And it's something different than what, what it was, has been in previous years. So hopefully that has leveled out some also now that, you know, COVID is over and good car production is back up.
Right. Okay.
Car insurance hadn't gone down though.
And you as a colle-
Well, if you didn't own 27 cars.
Just sex. Just sex.
If you didn't own 26 cars, that wouldn't be a mission.
One other quick question, Larry, and I don't think you have an answer, is there's no way that the collector knows if the taxes are on new construction or existing real estate? Is that right?
No, we don't. We, we have an assessed value for new construction every year.
But do you know that, that of the dollars you collected, how much of those dollars came from new construction?
We could probably figure that out. I've never tried to do that. But obviously, if you have a, if you know what taxing entity that new construction is in, I mean, you can take the ringtone if you come up with a dollar.
But can you press a button and say, compute real estate taxes on new construction? And bang, you got the number?
That I don't know. I've never tried it. I'll look and see.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you. Oh, we got approved.
Yeah.
Approve and accept it then?
Yes, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve and accept the Collector's Annual Settlement Report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Roll Down Metal Door for the Data Room Project.
This is part of the Data Room Project. We are proposing to have a metal roll-down door for added security to that area. It's approximately $7,400 to do so. We could utilize, actually utilize the contingency fund built in within that project to be able to take for this.
I'll make a motion to approve the roll-down metal door for the Data Room Project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Marijuana Sales Tax Supplementing Part-Time Money for Marijuana Expungements.
So just like with the courts, when they got hit with the expungements, now we're, we're starting to get hit with them too. We have about 1,000 right now that we're working on. They take anywhere from 10 to 15 minutes, depending on how deep, how, you know, how in-depth we have to go. As you have to get two different systems that we utilize. What I'd like to do is use some of the marijuana money to pay for some part-time people. The two captains, actually, that just retired and try to get them to come back and do this part-time for $25 an hour. It'd be a total of about $16,000 to the end of the year.
Sheriff, you and I have talked about this and you explained to me that what you're expunging are photos, pictures, fingerprints, I guess other data on someone who was convicted?
Well, actually, what we go by is the court order that comes down and says you can roll expunged these. And that's what we go by.
Okay. So one of the judges next door has been busy doing all of that. It comes over to you and now you've got things to expunge.
Well, if the judge does, then Mark Raichels people do. And then it comes to me and then I have to do what we do.
Right.
What's that? Well, Patrol, JCPD, all of them, we all get those expungement letters depending on who's, who the case falls with them.
Right. But you're just, you're, you're, you're trailing the, the judge who says expunge.
Yes.
Got it? It's a, it's an obvious cost that you're, or we're incurring. So why not use the source of revenue to offset it, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the supplementing of part-time tax money for the marijuana expungement out of the Adult Recreational Marijuana Tax.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Going out to bid for ESD tile for Data Room itself.
I'll turn this over to Brian. Here you go, Brian. Here. I'll get you back to that help.
So this has to do with the, the new data room down in impositional space at the sheriff's office. So after we reviewed it, we noticed that there's concrete floor only in that room. And typically, you want something better, a better ESD than just concrete. Concrete does some to prevent it static, but it doesn't do anything to dissipate it. So when we went through and I started looking at it, I also noticed concrete dust in the corners and things like that. So when you put in a bunch of machines who have power supplies that are pulling in all that things that you can push and mix that with dust, it's not good for the equipment. So ultimately, what I'd like to do and what we're proposing is that we put in this Duraflex floor. And it's more of a vinyl-based floor. So there are different types of flooring that you can put in. You can put in like a ESD epoxy and polyurethane. You could put in ESD rated carpet, different things like that. But as far as like the performance of the, the performance of ESD, which is the ability to dissipate electrostatic discharge and to dissipate it, I would say that we need to go with this type of floor that's in there. This wasn't anything that I caught when we were looking at the build-out of it. This is something that I looked at and before I had any more equipment, racks or anything else like that, I would like to go ahead and, and just put it out for bid, is that right?
Yes, sir.
So I'd like to go ahead and put this out for bid, put this type of flooring down before we install any more hardware or things like that.
How many square foot do we have in there? What was that?
I, I'm just taking a swag at it, but.
523.
I was gonna say 623.
I have no idea. I made that up.
No, it's around, it's around 600.
I just asked you earlier, what do you think, about 500? I have no clue.
Yeah, it's.
You sound like a politician now.
Yeah.
523.
Yeah, it's, it's around 600 square.
Okay. And then you had some kind of a guesstimate on it?
Yeah, so, so far, it's 13,500 is kind of the guesstimate. 13,000.
Do you know what the ESD stands for?
Electrostatic discharge.
Is LVT antistatic?
I'm sorry?
No.
Luxury vinyl tiles, is it antistatic?
I didn't look that up.
It, it is antistatic, but it has no way to dissipate it like this stuff does. That's the problem.
Walk around and touch.
Yeah, if you touch the computers and watch the spark, that looks always good.
Okay.
So I would just ask that we were ready to be able to put this out of a bid.
Okay. Is that what you have down in your office?
We actually put down the final flooring down in, in the IT room for the county.
Okay.
Yeah.
It didn't have as many computers and stuff in it or?
It actually, it did have a lot of computers in it, but I think there was an ESD rating on that as well. So I'd have to look and make sure.
Okay.
So it's all about, you know, not building up static, a static charge while you're in there and then also keeping it from allowing it to dissipate.
I just learned a lot about the flooring this morning.
Me too.
Sheriff didn't mention it, so I was trying to catch up, so.
Makes sense to me that.
He brings Brian in, so it's. Put it on you.
Does this need a motion?
Yeah, I think.
I'll make a motion to pursue going out to bid ESD tile for the data room. And the sheriffs have trouble with this word. Inter-
Interstitials.
Interstitial space.
Well, they call it data room.
Okay.
Second.
Do we want to make it after you take your ruler and measure it so we're?
I'm gonna go with five fingers.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Discussion of Walk-In Cooler at EMA.
Good morning.
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 A few weeks ago, Nick asked me to come out and look at his cooler to see what we can back up and running. He's got two of them out there. Both were not functioning at the time when I was looking at them. One was locked up. One compressing unit was locked up. The other ones were, I call them flatlined, no refrigerant left in them, which means there's holes in, in a hole somewhere. Had a company come out, look at them as well. They said they were not repairable since they were over 50 years old. Gave it a price of a little over $50,000 to put two units in for the sizing. They're not small units. They're, I think each one's around 20 ton each. So they're not small units. It's a lot of money for just to sit there in case we do need it. But I also agree with, you know, if there is a mass casualty, you know, trailers might be hard to find. But then again, if we do an agreement with one of the companies that has trailers, that might suffice too.
So this room has been used for a lot of things during H1N1. My understanding is it had a security system put on it, a keypad so that it was fully secure and locked. And then, of course, the fatality storage portion of it is something that we had the ability for. We've actually partnered with health department in making sure that we get racks. And those are sitting in the room. We wanted to make sure before those were installed that everything was working properly. The last time the system was run was sometime around 2000, oh, I'm sorry, 2020 during COVID. And at that time, it might have needed coolant, but it was working. And now it is not. And so there's a lot of things that we do in emergency management that we do for rapidus. But I think especially since we are the capital and have the ability to have these enhanced threats, that we have the ability to hold mass storage for decedents. You know, not to speak to everything, but the criminal matter is, you know, if there was a terrorist attack, we need to make sure that we have the ability to house folks so law enforcement can continue and do their inspection of the decedents. And Boone County would be quickly overwhelmed. Their hospitals would be quickly overwhelmed. So the capabilities that we have, we lose this. We might never use the room or we might use it tomorrow. We don't know. Yeah, please.
So H1N1 was before, I was at DHSS at that time, not at the county. But it's my understanding that those coolers were used for vaccine storage as well. So it's not just for mass fatality that folks can also turn them down and use in store vaccine storage. Like I said, we did just use a DHSS contract to buy the racks for those rooms. I know it's written in the mass fatality plan. It's written in the state's plan. So if the county doesn't feel the need to spend the money or doesn't want to right now, my suggestion is that we contact the state and see if there's any contracts or grants that we can get to help supplement it.
I second that.
Since the state is, you know, it's, we CMA hasn't written in their plan, we should at least ask them for help. But I think that it's important for us to have this storage, whether it's for vaccine or body, you know, decedents, whatever. And I mean, during COVID, we couldn't get anything. I, I would think that if there's a mass fatality or some serious event, and we're not gonna be able to get a refrigerated truck, like Nick pointed out, once we put dead bodies in it, then we're gonna own that truck. We even if we contract with the local company, be like, oh, yeah, we're done using that. You can have it back to haul ice cream? Probably not. So we probably need to, to kind of think this through and maybe search for some other company. Is my suggestion, if I could have a suggestion.
That sounds like a reasonable suggestion to me, Chris. The, you know, the feds have got to have some kind of mobile things they move around for storms and.
They do, yeah, D-MAD.
And so if every county put in a facility like this, it would be just so over, overbuilt. And I'd rather we pursue other opportunities before we pull the trigger on 50,000.
Yeah, Nick sent us a map with the fatality planning and resources in Missouri. We've got two of them. Two surge locations in Cole County, counting hours. And there's another that just says other. And throughout the state, there's not very many doctors otherwise. So I, I think the state would be interested in keeping this up. And I think it'd be more on them than on us.
I think it's, well, it's worth asking them to be a partner.
Yeah. I know during COVID, we had weekly calls with all of our health partners. And the, the hospitals, our two hospitals, their MARGs are very small. So, which is one, a reason why we looked at, at using one of the, what had been a beer cooler as a potential MARG if we, you know, if we needed it.
But it worked at that time.
Fortunately, we did not need it.
And it worked at that time. We may not have done it if we would have had to dump 50,000 into it when we purchased the building.
And, and the difference between COVID is the ability of how you store, right? You know, we, we don't need to, they, they can, they can have those bodies processed much faster, right? But because of evidentiary value that you might need if there was a terrorist attack, you would need to have those bodies left preserved until they could be examined. So that's, that's the difference of those two. So these COVID, you know, funeral holds to handle an amazing amount of.
Yeah. I know.
Say, yeah, Sayle's stood up a huge facility during COVID because, you know, just to give it up.
Well, where do you hold, but they can process like. It's it's an amazing amount. They might not be able to hold, including including both hospitals. You're talking less than eight.
Yeah, it's their their M R Gs are very small. I know on, you know, watching TV, because that was, all that was on was COVID. A lot of the bigger hospitals in the cities were using refrigerated trucks. And so that's kind of what gave me the idea that that this might be, you know, an alternative to spending fifty thousand dollars, so.
It's an alternative. I think we should maybe purchase some alternative funding.
Yeah, okay.
Please try.
Well, I think you made a very valid point. If it's in the state plan, then they should be interested in it. So that's who I would go to and see if we can get something on that or put it in the plan for next year when we bring in emergency management.
Can you go through your contacts or look through ours?
Okay.
Cool. Thanks.
And this was just a discussion, so.
Yeah, don't mess with our ice cream trucks.
Okay. Cole County United Way fundraiser. You know, for the last few years, the health department has done a fantastic job of being our our trend setter, whatever you want to call it. And. Okay, wait, wait.
Let's do something that maybe some of us there at the awards are in and doing, and that will be all. We came up with some ideas and we're kind of putting all that together. And we have a tentative date. It's actually penciled in on the calendar at Oak Hills for August fourteenth. So get it on your calendars. And tee time is likely ten A M. Probably cap it at thirty teams. I think we can get there. Don't know the exact cost, but ones that I've done or done or played in typically a hundred per person, four hundred a team is is pretty normal. We'll do whole sponsors, drink sponsors, lunch sponsor, possibly have an attendance gift sponsor. Sometimes with golf tournament scrambles, there's an attendance gift of some sort, so that could be an option. We'll also do a barbecue with this. Not everybody's gonna want to play golf. County employees that would like to support it but don't want to play golf will have a barbecue. The barbecue will be a part of people playing golf. It'll be with the be included in the in the entry fee. But then other people, whether it's county employees, just anybody in general could buy tickets for that or just kind of the day of. And that'll also be at Oak Hills, so we'll have everything going on right there. Possibly, like I said, sell tickets hopefully ahead of time so we get somewhat of a head count to know what to prepare. Chance that we can do like drive-through orders. People can eat there and we could also possibly do delivery. So maybe even do a silent auction. So we're kind of putting all these things together to to try to do the best event that we possibly can. August fourteenth, it's a little warm typically, but I've done tournaments in August and sometimes it's really hot. Sometimes it's very, very cold. It depends. And don't plan her out around what could be. We just selected that date. Shortly before things are due to the United Way, so it fits in nicely with that. And we just have a few people at the at the shop talking about it right now, but I'd like to have a small county committee working on it. I can send out an email to the elected heads, department heads, and get a small group together to to help plan this. We don't really need help organizing the golf tournament. We might need some help reaching out to potential sponsors or at least getting people within their own departments to participate. Either playing golf or doing barbecue or being a part of going and actually eating there. And probably a good thing for elected heads would be to sponsor a hole. That's kind of the norm. We see that a lot. So I think that would be, I'm not gonna expect that necessarily, but I think it would be a good. I'll I'll reach out to all the elected heads and hopefully we can get them to sponsor it in that way. Hole sponsors are typically a hundred dollars, maybe one fifty. It just kind of it kind of varies, so. I think it, I think we can pull this off and do very good at it. And I know we've got several people there at the office that are pretty pretty energized to do this. Barbecue and golf are kind of our thing, so we can handle that. One question I got is startup money as far as purchasing food primarily. How does that normally handle? Is that a donation ahead of time that we use or?
What if you sold your whole sponsorships early to get get your seed money?
I think that would be probably the way to do it, but I just didn't know what the what the common ways.
We weren't provided any funding. We first, we first did our own. For back donations.
So probably the easy way is to have some money coming in first. And it's not like you have to buy everything a month in advance.
Right.
And maybe we can even get some of that sponsored. So that's what I got so far. Usually with golf tournaments, you like to get things out maybe as much as three months in advance. So we're about three months out, so we'll hopefully shortly get a get a flyer out, registration going, get some things set up, so.
Did you check with Oak Hills that that date is available?
Yes, yes.
Did you check how many golf carts they have for how many teams?
Uh, I did not.
I thought they were around twenty-eight. So what I would recommend is stopping at, say, twenty-six teams, because you're going to want somebody to ride around in golf carts and refreshments and be able to take pictures and stuff like that. If you're gonna do a barbecue there, it's gonna be really crowded, so I don't know if you may want to talk to Knights Columbus and use their parking lot or something and do the barbecue there or something afterward. If you get, if you get a full tournament, it's gonna be crowded in there. And if you have people coming in and getting barbecue and depending on how many people are working, or maybe we can park people at the Knights Columbus and shuttle them over so we got more room. I mean, where there's will, there's a way to do it, so.
My thought was just park it across the street. It parks in the building, but I didn't think about Knights or even else, you know, possibly we could.
Yeah, parks will let us park down there and stuff. That'd make some room, because it's gonna get crowded in there, so.
Yeah, at least for people working, whatever, you know, park off site, because the parking lot does get a little full. And I hadn't really thought about capping it at twenty-six, but that's a good idea, I think, especially.
If you have to haul carts in, you don't make any money on them.
Especially that location, that gets, you know, it's a little tight getting everybody in with the clubhouse arrangement at Oak Hills, so.
Did you check?
I'll see what they have to say on that.
And did you check with the other golf courses around here, just to make sure there's not other fundraisers you're gonna be competing with or trying to?
I know H B A has a court hall tournament that night. That was the only conflict, but I did not check other golf courses to see what might be on.
Wednesday's probably a pretty slow day for scrambles.
Yeah, I think they usually.
Friday or kind of norms. So I I think that good, good point. I'll I'll check Jeff on that.
There's so many golf tournaments. It's. All right, we'll get some of our departments to come up with teams. I could see E M S out there hitting balls.
Okay, well, that's some good suggestions. Anybody? Does that anything, anybody, any other, anybody else here have suggestions? E M A, especially us, it's only that we'll be the ones to make sure.
Well, I I appreciate you stepping forward and and we'll take care of giving out the pledge cards and things like that, so.
I can give you the names of who were, who was on the committee last year. I know Ralph got some great donations. Brian helped. Carrie from the quarters office. Sparky, you know, we had a a committee that volunteered and helped invite donations because we, Sam got some for us. So it's a hidden silent auction basket, so maybe we can use those for prizes. I guess we'll have to talk about, you know, staff participating because we saw that day and things like that, so. But we, and we're willing to help and be on the committee, but just to want to be in charge this year.
So we'll get the courts to have have a couple of teams too.
So one thing, you know, I appreciate other other ideas as far as sponsorships, because, I mean, what we do, we got a pretty big reach with our vendors and whatever, you know, and we can probably reach out pretty far there and get a lot, but I don't want it to just be people that the public works with or does business with. Maybe put a team in or sponsor, getting it more well-rounded.
Say, we have a pretty good.
I hope you've questioned.
Yeah.
I hope you've.
Donations. I mean, we had, I'll, what did Hillister do was on the committee last year.
You may have said that to me, but if you want to do it again, then maybe even what's your, you know, sponsor for.
Yeah, we have, we have. Ralph wants to have a dunking boot.
In August, that might not be bad.
I'm gonna ask you, does Oak Hills have room for a dunking boot? We can put the three commissioners.
Well, just, just. I'm out of town.
Just the two that are running for reelection.
Sam, remember when they kicked the pole?
And we threw water balloons at him.
Maybe I'll hold the whole night where everybody driving by can walk and watch Jeff get dunked.
I'm gonna be out of town, so I can't make it. We got a MacBook meeting.
Do you need some electric signboards?
Got MacBook meeting, H B A meeting. Solid waste management district.
You know, we talked about taking a mini excavator with a bucket. I played a tournament last year. You chipped it in buckets. You know, if you made it in the excavator bucket, you won a prize or whatever. We could do things like that. There's little gimmick type things that kind of get a little excitement and maybe have a, get a commissioner, have you guys stand up.
Do you want me to get you a card? I can get you a cardboard cutout of me. That way I'm there in spirit. And cardboard. We put that out there, hole number five on that.
Up a team as well, Alex.
Uh, you, there's all kinds of gimmicks you can do.
You could have a lot of them.
Have a buy-up hole, can buy them all against. And then, yeah, so.
Well, thank you.
Yep.
Stepping forward.
Yeah, it seems all good. It'll be fun. So, yep, that's that's kind of the initial thoughts and plans. We'll try to get the flyer out within the next few weeks and start generating some interest and see where it goes. Anything else?
You gonna have like a traveling cup trophy or anything?
I could actually, we could do like the grand champion.
That just made you're gonna have to do it again next year, by the way, so.
Doing it the first time, get get everything set in place. It's a lot easier after that. But one thing, typically you go to these charity type tournaments and there's cash prizes for white winners and things. Played there. I did a trivia night. It was a United Way fundraiser trivia night. Every fall there, the winners, what they do is they specify which United Way charity they want their money to go to directly. And so I thought that was a good idea. So what what we could do is just on the entry fee for a team, just select, give them a list of the the United Way company or whatever, whoever United Way supports, give them that list and they could select their one they're playing for. And so that also might help a little bit in generating, not not additional money, but maybe give some of the people, you know, people they play for. It's a little different taste.
I can donate some golf balls a gift to the worst team.
Yeah.
They'll need them, so. There's your.
I think, yeah, I think this will be fun.
Or the most honest team, whatever you want to call it.
Get the sheriff to give some get out of jail free cards. I seen pacing out there.
Maybe the collector could give free taxes for one year. I'll give that to you.
It's coming out of the road bridge fund, so. I changed your mind on that.
Sorry. We'll, we'll have fun with it, so it'll be good.
Good. Well, thanks. Thank you again, sir.
Just let us know what you need. We'll help out with it.
Okay, gosh, we breezed through this and.
I do have some other things.
Yes, yes, yes.
Tell us that. You already used all your time.
Well, this.
Engineers.
Real quick, we have a ribbon cutting ceremony for the J C Cole County Park parking lot renovations coming next week. You may have sent me, seen an email.
Chris sent us.
Are y'all gonna do a calendar invite for that?
Uh, yes.
Or just send them that out?
Yeah, we'll, we'll do a calendar invite for you all.
When was it?
It's next, the twenty-second.
I'll leave some of these up here, so it's next week, the twenty-second, from two to four. We'll have some light refreshments there. Parking lot turned out really, really good and it was a great improvement over what we had before. And I know the Parks Committee was really behind us and something we had worked on for quite a while and finally made it, made it happen this year. So it's it's a nice improvement out there. Kind of sets the stage for maybe more things to come out there as as funding is available, especially with playgrounds. You know, there's some great opportunities out there. Also, we just finished our parking, or our our playground scrap tire surface out at Brooks Park. That is finished a few weeks ago. We have to do a ribbon cutting on that too, and that'll be at the Parks Committee meeting next month. I actually hosted out at Brooks Park, so we'll do the ribbon cutting and then have a meeting out there. So some, some good things happening in the parks as of late, so I just wanted to mention the ribbon cutting ceremony. Make sure everybody's aware of that.
Did you receive that letter on grants, using the tires again for playground equipment? Jeff, I think we, all three of us received it last week.
I did not, but we can't go after that again for ten years.
Okay.
Yeah, there was a provision when we got the line.
Okay.
Kind of what we choose.
Okay.
But there might be other playground opportunities out there. I know, I'm not sure which department, but there's a pretty significant one for playgrounds. And we use that for Brooks Park in the past and also drain a park. So we could go after one for county parks. Now, I have another item to bring to your attention, and it's gonna require commission action and maybe later in the week. We're trying to apply for an F R E grant for the cart. We did this back two years ago when we got money to actually provide the construction of the project. This one, we're wanting to purchase a trackmobile, and that would be the unit that actually moves around cars. The operator could lease one, and that's the plan right now, but there is money to provide to the Mo dot F R E, and that's the brain enhancement. There is money to actually, that can go towards equipment at these facilities. So bad thing is, this application is due Friday, and I missed getting this on the commission agenda for today. It's gonna require a resolution. We're going for, it'll be, the cost that will be put into the grant will be five hundred fifty thousand. It's a fifty fifty match. And we're, the operator would support the other, the other half, but as a sponsor, we have to have a resolution saying that. So we're working on getting some things together for that, but if we could schedule something possibly later in the week, Thursday, if that's okay, just a short meeting. I hate to have you commit to something without the information, so I don't want to expect that, but if we could do something on Thursday, it works.
I think we could probably make room for that.
Yeah.
To have a meeting on a Thursday, we have to post it on a Wednesday, I guess.
At least by tomorrow at nine, yes. So if you all are okay doing that.
Yes.
Again, it's, the grants due Friday and the purpose would be for that.
Yeah, that doesn't sound like an inexpensive piece of equipment, so.
Is this a mini locomotive type of thing?
Yeah, I can show you pictures, but it's just a, it almost, you know, these, these trucks, these tractors, the all-around trailers, two in front. Around town here, there. That that equipment for hauling trains around, it's upwards of thirty cars. They're small.
Really?
They can actually hop off the track and drive on the road, so.
Hmm. Cool.
So we got a bid, I think Thursday afternoon at thirty, so if you just want to put it on the agenda after that or?
That'd be totally fine, yes.
Be right before that and we can try to, maybe, I'm not sure what time we got, we got graduation Thursday night, we got ten, so. Sam and Harry are gonna be here.
Yeah, Thursday three is fine.
I mean, it's just approving the resolution applying for the grant, so.
Yeah, we, it's, yeah, if we get it, then we go through an agreement with Mo dot and everything, and more things are in place. everything, and more things are in place at that point. But this is just approving the regulation that we support the project.
Okay. So tentatively, we're looking at 3 o'clock on Thursday?
I appreciate this. I like, so I, I just miss getting it on the agenda today. Just too many things happening all at once and just.
Yeah, we can make things happen.
Paul Sampson called me this morning, reminded me that, that things do. I haven't seen.
Well, blame it on him for not calling you earlier. He should have called you on Friday. So blame it on Paul, he's not here.
Yeah, so. Anyway, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Okay.
Very good.
Thanks.
Do we have anything else to come before, before we go into closed session? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make a motion pursuant to Section 610.021 of the revised statutes of Missouri. The commission will go into closed session to discuss the following. Existing or proposed security systems under Section 610.021 subsection 19.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Sam.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Hey, I wasn't about to see and ask you on each one of these, but so this county.
That's the 1% we get off all the taxes we collect.
And that goes to general.
General fund.
So that's just kind of like a service fee we get.